Welcome back, everyone. I am Karen Hiller, the Deputy Mayor. This is the second half of budget meeting number four for the Budget Committee. Councilwoman Schwartz is here, I am here. I did want to send regards from Councilman Cohen, who was expecting to be here, who came up with an emergency he has communicated in, and also the City Manager, who we scheduled this meeting late and had a pre-commitment for the afternoon, but certainly sends his regards. And remind everyone, these have been great presentations so far. The public is watching, and these tapes will be available for the public and council members to watch later as well. With that, let's roll straight into the next presentation, which looks like fire. Just a guess.
Lucky guess.
Mr. Gerber, ready to go?
Okay. Deputy Mayor Hiller, Councilwoman Schwartz, members of our city's governing body to whom we are proud to serve. Thank you for this opportunity to provide additional information to you regarding our Topeka Fire Department, but more importantly, to address any questions or concerns which you may have. Our department has worked closely with our city's finance team and with our City Manager's office to prepare our 2016 budget, which is reflected in your budget book, starting on page 28. And we're confident and comfortable that, I'm sorry, and we are confident and comfortable that we are going to be able to operate within the City Manager's prepared budget. Our budget is pretty straightforward, pretty simple. Twenty-three million, seven-hundred-seventy-five dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-three million, seven-hundred-seventy-five thousand, six-hundred-ninety-nine dollars, or roughly eighty-nine percent is personnel costs. Two million, nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty dollars, or seven-point-six percent is contracts. A little over six-hundred thousand, or two-point-five percent is commodities, which make up the majority of our budget. It may slightly differ than the numbers that you have in the book as it's broken down into the capital wages, benefits, and commodities, but we're confident it's the exact same thing. We have presented a flat budget for 2016. As my wife says, I can talk about the Topeka Fire Department all day long and all night, but what I've found is more prudent that I yield the things that I think are important to the questions that people will have. And I'm confident that you've had a lot of opportunity to review our budget and I will yield at this time to any questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. When I took a tour with you two years ago, I think the comment, was it seventy-five percent of the calls were medical? Is that still about the right amount of, that the calls are coming in are more medical than fire?
Absolutely. The majority of our calls are medical calls. Roughly, it's just north of seventy-two percent, right around seventy, seventy-two-point-five or so, seventy-two percent.
Okay. And have we, I know that there was some discussion of, you know, having smaller equipment respond to those calls than the big fire trucks if they were just medical. Have we looked into that? And is that something that's going to happen in the future with not having to send out huge fire trucks for a medical call?
Oh, the old proverbial, unless you've been living on the rock, you would know that there's been a tremendous amount of discussions around the operations of the Topeka Fire Department and how the Topeka Fire Department will look going forward. We are engaged in some ongoing studies, including, I know one that's very near and dear to you is the resource allocation studies. And it's one that we thoroughly are looking at and trying to utilize and incorporate into the decision-making process for us. As well, we have a couple of additional studies that are underway that we think are going to help us to make the most prudent and best decisions, including whether or not we have the right number of fire stations, the right-sized vehicles, the right number of personnel, a number of variables that are extremely important when we are trying to decide the most efficient manner to move our department forward.
And I hope, District Seven has no fire department or fire station in the entire boundaries within the district. So I know that there's, you know, discussion of maybe closing two, opening one. That is part of the discussion as to the location of the fire stations?
I'm very consciously apprehensive about mentioning specific numbers. I realize we had budgetary discussions, but my fear of doing that, or my apprehension of doing that, is people will tend to grab those numbers and say, "You said you were going to close twenty-three stations," or "You said you were going to close fifteen." We don't even have twenty-three stations, you know? So that's my apprehension around it. But I think the thing that's important and what we would like the citizens of Topeka to know is that we're going to work very closely with the City Manager's office, with the governing body, and with the community to find out what is the exact fit and what is the preferred fit for the city of Topeka.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a, just to follow up on that, is there a timetable at this point at which you hope to get all those studies in and do some resolution on those issues?
Well, we have some timetables, and they are various that we have. But, and again, for some of the similar apprehensions that I mentioned before, as soon as I say we're going to do it yesterday, then when the sun rises today and we haven't done it, why wasn't it done yesterday, Chief? But the commitment is to get it done. And I want you to rest assured that you have the right City Manager, you have the right Fire Chief, you have the right governing body, and all the right people in the right places to work very diligently to ensure that we're going to realize the efficiencies that we as a community want.
So, because there was no correct answer to that question I really wanted to ask because the public has wanted to know, so stay tuned.
Correct. That's correct.
All right. That's fine. Thank you. Any more questions? All right. Just in case you thought you were going to be here for a half an hour. Looks like you're off. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Mr. Gerber?
I believe Sasha Stiles is on her way up.
All right. Department of Neighborhood Relations, so we turn to page thirty-three. Okay?
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Schwartz.
And this is Sasha Stiles, Director of the Department of Neighborhood Relations. Thank you.
Okay, so, to summarize what you have on, starting on page thirty-three of your budget book, give me just a second here, I'm sorry. Our total budget for Neighborhood Relations is just slightly over nine-point-one million. Forty-nine percent of that is general fund dollars. Three-and-a-half percent comes from the Streets Fund and supports the inmate programs, and forty-seven-and-a-half percent of that is grant funds from Housing and Urban Development at the federal government. To touch on some of the services that we provide to the community, approximately fifty-eight homes will be rehabilitated, repaired for emergency situations, and accessibility provided. Nine first-time home buyers will be assisted through the Topeka Opportunity to Own Program. Currently, we have eight in the queue this year already, so we're making good progress on that in the current year. A hundred-and-eighty individuals receive credit, I'm sorry, homebuyer counseling. We partner with HCCI and provide funding for that service. In addition to that, five-hundred-and-thirty-one households receive rental assistance and supportive services through our Shelter Plus Care Program. In addition to those five-hundred-and-thirty-one households, we anticipate serving a hundred-and-thirty-five households with our Emergency Solutions Grant. That program provides shelter and essential services to prevent homelessness in the community. Additionally, and these are primarily the grant-funded programs that I'm touching on first, we provide service to twenty Neighborhood Improvement Associations. The most impressive thing that I believe we do in the Neighborhood Improvement Associations is the removal of approximately a hundred-and-fifty tons of trash and debris on an annual basis as a part of the Takeover Makeover Program. That is made possible through the inmate services programming that we have included in the budget. We also provide monthly newsletter support to the NIA, so a good service, but definitely the cleanup program is the most impressive. Social service programs, Deputy Mayor, you're very familiar with this, with your role on the ECD. We fund seven agencies that provide contractual services, five with CDBG grant funding in addition to the seven, and then nineteen agencies are funded with City General Funds. Neighborhood Relations administers those grants, the grant funding wants, and monitors the progress of the agencies once the final determination and recommendation is made by ECD. So that's a lot of good work. Those grant programs, we believe, impact the lives of approximately twenty-three thousand people in the community, so it's a pretty important program. Now, moving on to general funds, so property maintenance. I've visited with you guys briefly at the presentation about the cases that we do on an annual basis. Twenty-fourteen saw approximately ninety-five hundred property maintenance cases, and year to date, we've opened and worked approximately forty-three hundred. That equates to about five-hundred-and-twenty-nine cases per property maintenance inspector. Our Development Services, which is the Building Department, provides four-to-five-hundred building permits annually. In addition to that, they provide six thou, or over six thousand trade permits and nine-to-ten-thousand inspections on an annual basis. In addition to that, they also issue approximately thirty-five hundred trade licenses for contractors and tradesmen in the community. We have a total of forty-seven FTEs included in the 2016 budget proposal. You're familiar with the three requests for new FTEs, one in Development Services for a mechanical inspector, and then two additional property maintenance inspectors. So we're asking for three, but I would point out that we've also had one reduction in formerly HND. So we've given up one, but we're asking for three in other areas. And that's really the long and short of my five-minute presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
You nailed that. And we have, we have focused on some of these things before, don't need to repeat it, but if there are new questions?
My only question would be, in the building permits, are we seeing that increasing? I mean, are we back? I know that recession, there's a lot of discussion that maybe the recession is over and we are on the mend. So is Topeka seeing more permits and requests?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, the, we've looked at the past, well, fourteen, thirteen, and twelve, so the three prior years. Two thousand and twelve was the high point for us. For those three years, we issued five-hundred-and-twenty building permits in two thousand and twelve. We were down a little bit in two thousand and thirteen at four-hundred-and-twelve, and two thousand and fourteen saw four-hundred-and-sixty-five. Now, building permits are different than the trade permits. That's actually going to be new construction, an addition, a tenant finish, something like that, so.
So it is improving?
It is. We are picking up the, that is in part, well, that's the reason for the request for the additional mechanical inspector.
Okay. Thank you.
As we grow, which we hope we will continue to do, do you have an estimate, any answers okay, about what the capacity is for the, if, you know, if we add the one inspector and we've got our full array of inspectors plus the backup, as I understand it, will we be able to grow significantly without needing more inspectors, do you think?
That's a tough question. What I can tell you is that we have two trade inspectors in each of the areas with the exception of the mechanical inspector. We only have one mechanical inspector, and how that impacts the operation is that if that mechanical inspector is sick or takes vacation time, then there are no mechanical inspections, or really, the part that bottlenecks is the plan review for building permit issuance. Because with two in each of the other trade areas, so plumbing, electrical, and then building, there's a backup system so that one can be performing inspections while the other is actually doing plan review. Many of the building permits that are issued require plan review. At this point, we have, we have a bottleneck in mechanical plan review and the inspection. So we're hopeful that we would be able to continue providing great service and shouldn't need to ask for more.
Okay. I mean, one of the things, as time has passed, is the desire, community-wide, to be developer-friendly.
Absolutely.
And so we've done a lot of improving along those lines, but just trying to see how much we can grow once you get your array.
I would, I would say with good confidence that we could provide good service with that total number of trade inspectors, as long as we don't double or triple the amount of building permits. But if we do, we're in a good place, so we'll have that conversation if the time comes.
At one point, the revenue from the permits was roughly supporting all of those inspectors. Is that still so, or equivalent to?
We have to defer to Nikki on that.
I think I'll have to follow up to give you the exact, just I want to make sure that I've got exactly, you're talking about revenue in Development Services compared to just the trade inspectors?
To what we're spending on the trade inspectors?
Mm-hmm. Let me get you that detail.
Okay. Hasn't come up in a long time. It's good to be at a point where it would come up again.
Absolutely.
All right. Other questions? I think we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Fiander to come forward and visit about the Planning Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Schwartz. I just handed out everything you ever want, sorry.
Okay. Want to make sure, go ahead and say your name and title again.
Bill Fiander, Planning Director. I just handed out everything you ever wanted to know about the Planning Department on one page, so.
Awesome.
But I'm sure if you, if it's not on there, let me know.
Not even for those who don't know.
Yeah, let's, to be brief, to start with our budget and the changes, we have a flat budget as well from last year. At the top there, you see in general fund money about eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. That's actually six thousand dollars less than last year. The reason for that is we did transition an employee from our department to Neighborhood Relations, that's the zoning inspector. So that's the reason for the drop. But everything else is flat. The second line there also adds a true picture of what our budget is. We do get federal funds, transportation planning funds. We're estimating about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand next year. It's two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand is what we usually get, and that helps to pay for two FTEs, two transportation planning positions, and all the regional transportation planning studies that we do. That's an eighty-twenty match, so we take twenty percent out of our general fund to help match that money that we get. So the city pays twenty, the MPO, the federal funds pay eighty of that. Of the FTE that we have, we have nine planners, one office support. I do consider myself a planner, still, so I'm in there. We have three main services, comprehensive planning, current planning, and transportation planning. Comprehensive planning, again, is that long-range of measuring and forecasting the physical development needs of the city, our growth management, our land use plans, our neighborhood plans, historic preservation is in there. Current planning, as the term indicates, is current developments. This, these three FTEs review compliance for all development in the city for zoning and subdivision codes. Our subdivision codes extend out into the three-mile limit as well. And then lastly, transportation planning is pretty much what it says. This is, this is our MPO, our federally funded and mandated regional planning effort with Topeka. This funds two FTEs and things such as the bikeways plan, our long-range transportation plan, our current pedestrian plan that we're working on. Those are the sort of things that this money and this staff supports. So with that said, I'll stand for any questions if you might have any.
I'll start out by complimenting you as well. Not that the others weren't excellent presentations, but this is awesome. This is a lot of information on one page.
I told you.
And well-presented. It makes sense. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, I only had the question about, I know we voted on extending Shunga Trail at Twenty-Ninth and Fair Lawn. What's, how's that project going? Is it, is it happening?
From what I understand, and Doug Whitaker could confirm this as well, but I believe that project is being let in the fall, so we should be on pace to get that constructed here and completed, oh, by next, next spring.
A year from now.
Is that, or summary, is that okay? It says, yeah.
Let's just stretch it. They said next spring.
Stretching.
Let's say now.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think that's, that was working through some issues with KDOT and their review of the project.
Okay.
There was KDOT review, and then actually, and we've all kind of watched the, without dwelling on it, the state budget issues, and for some reason, then, the Bank of KDOT deferred all action for grants that we have to start till after the first of July, which interestingly enough is the next fiscal year, so.
Okay.
Bikeways plan got put up, you know, the implementation, the big grant that we have isn't going to start till this fall either. Hopefully, it will start and finish, but.
Okay.
Kate, the Shunga Trail one is a little more involved, and so apparently, we'll have to go over the winter. I just, I know that because I'm on the groups that are tracking that and asking that question once a month. So, thank you, Bill, for all your staff's work, and Doug, actually, on moving those forward. The Public Works Engineering staff had to re-engineer that whole Shunga Trail project because KDOT, in the time that passed, had new people reviewing, and the standards got upgraded, and so the issue of whether there would be a bridge and a lot of things, they had to redesign the whole thing. Thank you. Other questions then on planning? Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor, I think we'll switch gears now, back into the Public Works portion of the presentations, and maybe we'll start with utilities, since I'm sitting here talking already. Reintroduction, Doug Gerber, interim Director of Utilities. I'll put on my other hat right now.
Can I stop you just a second and ask if Ms. Stiles will be staying till the end? I've got a question that bridges Public Works and DNR.
Every department had plans to stay till the end.
Okay. I'll hold on to it then, thank you.
But if you, if you'd like to dive into it now, that's fine.
It's a small one. If I just want to, now that I got everybody worried, the, one of the things that was a management thing that we did this year, or last year and this year, was to move all the inspectors together under the Department of Neighborhood Relations. And so we brought in building inspection and code compliance and the zoning inspector that we just talked about from planning. I've had a couple experience with, and then some recent calls about the issue of sidewalks. And right now, the, I think it's in engineering and Public Works that actually do the inspections and write-ups on sidewalks that are contrary to our city standard of having a gap of one inch or more. I wondered if there had been any conversation about moving that role. I'm not sure that's a person, because I'm not sure that they, I don't know how much time they spend on it. I wondered if there'd been conversation about moving that role into DNR as well, and I see Ms. Stiles coming up. Any answers, okay? It's just a question.
Property maintenance inspectors are charged with inspecting issues on private property, not public property. So we've recently run into an issue with a street right-of-way that was never actually, the road wasn't built. We had to get the legal department involved with the resolution of that issue because our property maintenance inspectors do not have the authority to enforce regulations on public property.
Right.
So that's what I know.
So, I mean, that's fine. So you've looked at the line between them at this point? We've probably got both on the police department side with cars that are parked in streets, as well as the sidewalk issues that are on public right-of-way but are the responsibility of the property owner in terms of still some inspections and possible actions that haven't yet been brought over to you, if they could be?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you. That helps to clarify why they're still out where they are. Appreciate it. Thank you. Got that out of the way.
Are you good, ready to proceed into utilities?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor, yes. So again, Doug Gerber, interim Director of Utilities. I'll provide a brief overview, and then if there are really specific questions, I have staff in the back that's way smarter than I on these issues, and we'll call them up if needed. We tend to talk about utilities as a conglomerate. We'll start in your budget on page one-fifty-five. But really, they are three separate and distinct funds and departments that have some separate and distinct missions. Specifically, we'll start, overall, though, utilities have two-hundred-and-twenty-two total employees and a budget of almost sixty-seven million dollars. Breaking those down by the Water Department, they have a budget of almost thirty-two million and a hundred-and-twenty-three full-time employees. Waste Water has a budget of twenty-eight-point-three million, seventy-three full-time employees. Storm Water has a budget of six-point-six million and twenty-six FTEs. For a total across, again, across all utilities of two-hundred-and-twenty-two folks and a budget of almost sixty-seven million dollars. Chief Brown and I talk on occasion about mission creep, and one of the things we focus on, or want to try to focus on in the utilities area, is staying true to our core mission. And very specifically, that is to make sure we deliver quality water, to make sure that water is treated appropriately, and in a very general sense, to make sure our storm water is quality and that the city of Topeka does not flood. And so we, every day, we accomplish those missions, or we certainly try to. We treat and process almost eight billion gallons of water every year and deliver that in a safe and effective manner. We treat and process six billion gallons of wastewater at our two treatment plants. We oftentimes forget that we have two treatment plants, one in Oakland and then the North Topeka Plant as well. Our customer service center takes almost a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand calls every year. That's a twenty-four-hour operation. We staff it from seven to six, and then from six through the nighttime hours, it's staffed by a call center, but we process a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand calls a year. We process, on average, four-hundred-and-thirty new customer hookups a month. And something that maybe we don't talk about very often, but we should, and that we have four-hundred annual home visits to help folks understand where they might have leaks and to help them identify those leaks and water usage issues. Our staff is very good at going on those visits and helping people walk through those issues. In terms of projects and accomplishments that we want to focus on for 2016, which is, of course, the point of this budget discussion, in a very generic sense, we want to have a better coordination of our projects, particularly street projects, with the, particularly waterline projects, with the Street Department. There has been some communication gaps, I think it's fair to say, and we're trying to improve those, we're working on those, and we want to try to make that even better in 2016. We want to have targeted infrastructure upgrades, whether it's continuation of our CSO plan, the Combined Sewer Overflow Plan that we presented to the council last fall, continuing to move forward with that. Another thing that we don't talk about very often is pump stations, whether it's on the water side, or the wastewater side, or the stormwater side. Those are crucial, crucial pieces of our infrastructure, and I would say, it's fair to say, particularly on the water side, that those have been long ignored, and we're trying to rectify that situation. We can have all the great line in the ground that we want, but if we don't have the stations to pump it there, it doesn't work. So we're really trying to rectify that and make some improvements to our pumping So we're, we're really trying to rectify that and, and make some improvements to our pump stations. Particularly, the water plant, main pump station, lane station, that's undergoing some analysis right now. We intend to have that project be a 15, 16 project to improve all the, our capability to push water out to the entire system. And then the final thing I would say is, again, in a very generic sense, we want to improve processes and procedures as, as we can and as we see fit. Whether it's improving our CIP process or some exciting customer service processes that we plan to announce in the very near future, or doing a better job with community outreach, which we've started and are trying to do better at as well. So again, a very generic overview with some facts and figures, numbers, and I would sit for questions if you have any.
Questions?
Just a quick one. We met, I think, a year ago about the ozonization or the water issue and some of our rural water districts getting letters. And there was an issue about whether or not we needed to invest in some new equipment there. Is that, is the water testing better now, or what's going on with that?
The ozone project, which isn't really accurate, it's really a project to deal with halicytic acids in the water.
Right.
But a lot of folks call it the ozone process because that's the treatment process that was anticipated. That project is, is in the CIP, it's in the 16 through 20 CIP. It's just been pushed out a few years. At this point, the City of Topeka's water continues to test at below the levels that we need to for HAA's in the water. And so we don't believe that we need to act imminently. So at, at this point, again, it's in the CIP, but it's not in the near, near-term CIP.
And you haven't heard any problems from the rural water districts that are using our water?
We have not. In our stance is when we deliver the water, it's, it meets the appropriate levels.
Thank you.
E311, I personally, back when we put in 368, 3111, the phone opportunity to call in. And then since with the E311, I've, I've always had good luck with the phone and been able to refer people to that. That's been real helpful because they can call from their car when they see something. Then E311, those were in, put in not just for utilities, but overall for Public Works to try and expedite the ability for consumers to call in themselves and through E311 to actually get the response as well. How is that working? You talked about customer service improving. Can you talk a little bit about where you feel you are in that implementation and how it's working and?
With E311 specifically?
Well, I, I think of the 311 system as a composite system in my head. I don't know if it is, but the, the 311 is in there and you can either phone it in or you can email it in. So, how many people are using it? Is it, is it working? You, you're talking here about improving customer service. I don't know whether that's an area of improvement or whether you think you've optimized how, how well that's working. I just don't know. For me, so my introduction was, for me, it works fine, but I don't know. What's your senses from the utility side?
I think there's always room for improvement. I mean, that's going to be a standard answer. I think we try to do a better job communicating out big picture messages so that when folks call in to that line and they get a live person, they're able to maybe answer those questions and they have knowledge of an event that has happened or may happen in the very near future. So that's one area that I think we've tried to do a better job of, of improving our communication so that questions can be answered more quickly.
And there was a time when sometimes there, there wasn't a pickup. I haven't had that. I don't call it that often, but it seems like that's been resolved.
We have a new Director of Customer Service. And her focus, she came from a call center background. And so I think that is a focus of hers, trying to improve that process and make it more effective. Where we really try hard to, to minimize the number of drop calls that we have, whether it's someone who just got tired of waiting or someone who actually just didn't get a pickup.
I mean, that's old news in terms of a wait. I had a couple experiences and other people did, but old news, so that's good. And then, and then the E311 on the computer side? Are we getting the numbers that you want to see come in through that and sparing the phone time and all that record-keeping? Or are we still needing to, where are we on that trajectory?
I think it's fair to say that the transition from City Works to 311 still needs some work on the utility side. But I know it's something that the division heads are, are focusing on and trying to, trying to get their staff to move, to move into and implement more effectively.
Thank you. That's good. Anything else, Councilwoman? Okay.
Okay. At this point, we'll ask Mr. Whitaker to come forward and.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman. Public Works, I'll talk.
Go ahead and do an introduction, a self-introduction just for the viewers.
Doug Whitaker, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Public Works operates and maintains the city's infrastructure, including the streets, parking system, traffic signals, signs, markings, forestry, bridges, city facilities, fleet. And then the utilities fall under the overall umbrella of Public Works, but Mr. Gerber's already spoke about that. Looking at Public Works, I'll just kind of. Thank you. I forgot to hand those out. Public Works, if you just look at the nine utility sections of Public Works, because you, in the book, page 73, I'm sorry, page 73 in a book, it's, it shows a $115 million budget. The Public Works portion outside of Utilities is $48,260,465 and has 155 FTEs, where like we said, the utilities had the 222. Public Works is funded under six separate funding sources. General Fund, the sales tax, motor fuel tax, the internal service funds, which would be fleet and facilities, and then the enterprise fund, which would be the parking. And on the side there, I just got, just so you know what we're maintaining, there's 1,530 lane miles of street, 161 miles of alleys. We've got about 100 facilities, 200 traffic signals, 550 crosswalks, 332 school crossings that we deal with, 50,000 signs that we have to chase and make sure that they're, and those are all traffic-related type signs. We're not talking wayfinding signs and like that. This is just the stuff that's related to traffic. And then we have 103 bridges that we have to inspect and maintain. So the major functions are engineering, basically administers the public improvement projects. They also inspect work that's performed in the right-of-way. And then they maintain all the survey data control points in the city. And just as a further clarification of that is if you need a vertical or a horizontal, you know, starting point for any surveyor, we maintain those, those benchmarks, benchmarks throughout the city for that. And then we manage the bridge inspection and maintenance program, which the bridges have to be inspected every other year. Forestry, I mean, I can, you want to, I don't know how you want, if you want questions on each little or I'll go all the way through it.
Go ahead, Tru.
Okay. Forestry takes care of the, obviously the tree care within the city right-of-way. So any tree that's within the right-of-way that needs trimming or, you know, is, is diseased, forestry's taking care of that. The facility landscape, some of the flower beds, et cetera, they're not, you know, up and down Kansas Avenue. Obviously, they're not there now, but we did maintain those. The ones outside of the 6th to 10th Street are still overseen by forestry. Cemetery maintenance, they actually work with three cemeteries. We do all of the administration and maintenance for the Mount Auburn Cemetery. And then we, since we help fund or, you know, send funds to the Rochester and the Topeka Cemetery, we do kind of work with their boards and, and, and just work with them to, it's more in a administrative or consultant type, just giving, helping them with different issues. And then we do ma, maintenance on the roundabouts as we continue to build roundabouts. Somebody's got to maintain the, the roundabouts. Traffic operations, that's where we operate and maintain. Like I said, we've got the traffic signals, streetlights fall under there, crosswalks, street signs, pavement markings and all the school crossings. Street maintenance, as we do the maintenance and repair of all of the streets. Again, we've got the 1,530 lane miles and the alleys. We do the sweeping, we do all the snow plowing and de-icing. Full-depth patching, that could either be concrete or asphalt, depending on the type of street that we're dealing with. Then pothole maintenance, crack sealing. And then we have the right-of-way mowing, which traditionally is just the first five feet of the right-of-way in most areas unless it's a major, you know, section or along the roadway that just is all street right-of-way, then we do mow those in some sections. This is separate from WPC, which maintains all the drainage areas and, you know, drainage easements and like that. So this would, we are not doing anything with the drainage type areas. On the back, obviously the citywide sales tax. There we, you know, we do the improvement and repair of the existing streets, sidewalks, curb and gutters and, and streetlights. And when I'm saying that, streetlights are, if we redo the streets, we usually upgrade the streetlights so that we're getting those from the older style to the new LED. Then fleet, we maintain and repair approximately, it's 1,000 vehicles and pieces of equipment. So we do other things than just, just vehicles. So we don't, you know, it's not 1,000 vehicles, but it's 1,000 total for vehicles and equipment. The technicians are ASE certified, which what that allows us to do is, is we are, since they're certified, we do, are allowed to do warranty work and then actually bill the manufacturer. In some cases, I think we did $68,000 or $69,000 worth of warranty work whereby we didn't have to send it to the warranty shop. We did it in-house and then they reimburse us. And then we manage the city's fuel program. We basically run that contract, maintain the fuel cards, et cetera, for all of the vehicles that utilize that system. Facilities, we maintain and repair services for approximately 100 city-owned facilities. We do preventive maintenance on the major systems, maintenance repairs, janitorial services. And then the garage services, we actually, the garage services actually fall under facilities for the Holiday Building and City Hall. We are in facilities adding two positions, two FTEs, and it's in the janitorial. And where that is coming from is, is WPC and Water went out to bid to re, you know, rebid their services. And the bids that came in, after looking at it, we feel we can do it in-house more efficiently. There were also issues, we had outsourced most of it. And just due to, I think, the level of service that we had established, we finally went in-house over the last few years for both City, excuse me, City Hall and the Holiday Building and even here at the LEC. And now have people that are there since our buildings are used all day. When I say all day long, we have a lot of walk-in traffic in all of those buildings that there is a janitorial person around during the normal business hours that can keep up the restrooms, the, the main hallways, et cetera. And then the last area is, is parking. That's where we provide parking administration enforcement and maintenance for. We have seven parking garages, we have eight surface lots that we've ran out. And then there's about 3,300 onsite parking spaces, of which 1,600 or about 1,700 of them are metered. So those are the major components of Public Works, the highlights, so I'll take any questions.
Councilwoman? None?
None.
Big fat beverman?
Doug lives in my district.
Let me ask one quickly. We have been talking in earlier sessions about the possibility of adding some FTEs to, to do street sweeping, which the discussion was that it would correspondingly relieve some pressure on existing staff to keep up with other preventive and maintenance items. In looking at this list, there certainly, street maintenance mentions the crack sealing and the full, full-depth patching. But other items that have come up in the discussion had to do with getting the pavement markings done annually and so on, but that's in a different grouping here on your list of traffic operations instead of street maintenance. If the, just to, just to clarify, if the, if the, the new dollars were approved or implemented, would that, would that relieve also the, being able to keep up a little better with the, the street markings, which I don't think have been done for a couple of years?
They've actually, they've been out painting on a regular basis. They were understaffed in 2014 and did not get all of the painting done that they should have. They are now back fully staffed in, in the, in the traffic operations. And their goal this year is, is to get everything painted that they should be painting.
Okay, so that was a separate issue then?
That was actually a separate issue. As far as in the street maintenance, adding the FTEs, I know it was presented that we would develop a street sweeping, you know, you know, team, organization, group, whatever it is. I think what I need to re-emphasize on that is it's not just street sweeping that we're not able to keep up with. It's street maintenance we're not able to keep up with. And, and those issues that we get just in the constant are coming in through the E311 system and like that is, is I want my alley graded, I want my street swept, I want my potholes patched, I want the street repaired, you know, the curb and gutters, all of those items. And we are not able to keep up with all of that with the current staff. And that's where, so I want to emphasize that it's the street maintenance that we really need, you know, from that area.
So alley grading is not listed here, but it is actually part of that street maintenance group, correct?
Yes, that's in street maintenance.
I, I called it grading, whatever. I know that they re-rock them and.
Right.
Whatever, run a grader down. Okay. We've had some, in terms of beautification of this, of this city, which ties in back with neighborhood relations as well, some people that have talked about the right-of-ways and some of which are ours that you mentioned, but others are the responsibility of KDOT, which has required a fair amount of administrative time, apparently, on your part to get hold of them and encourage them to mow a little more often and a little more carefully. One of the constituents that has called about that has suggested that we perhaps see if there's some conversation we could have, an arrangement that could be done so that we took care of them if our standards are higher than KDOT's, particularly for those rights of way that are the gateways to our city. Can you, can you react to that at all?
Basically, we had, there was a change. We know there was a change in the administer, the, the manager for the local district. And I think there was an understanding that he kept, basically, most of the areas, our, you know, our level is 12 inches. He would keep it 12 inches or shorter throughout the city on the right-of-ways as far as KDOT right-of-ways, et cetera. And then the area down along City Hall, which is that, where that beautification grant was put in and the fence and everything, he actually kept that closer to six inches, actually uses different mowers in there. If you, when you do see him mow, they're not using the gang-type mowers that they use out on the rest of the roads. There was a change and then, you know, we had been in touch with them, but we've got to follow backup with them is they were working to work with us. I think with everything that went on through the legislature and a lot of changes that they've had, I, we just need to get back and work, you know, get back in touch with the new personnel and just see where they are budget-wise, et cetera. For us to take it over, we don't have, you need these big, huge gang mowers and tractors and like that to be able to do that work. We don't have that right now. We utilize contractors for our mowing and even they are having troubles with all the rain we had of staying up because they have other jobs, you know, other work too. And the right-of-way, usually you could mow it once a month and that wasn't flying most of May and June because of the growth factors that we had. And there, we've had limited organizations that want to bid on that because we don't have the mowers. We have just a, a standard, what we call boom mower, that lets us mow about five feet along the edge in areas. But there's no way that, you know, we'd have to go out and buy a lot of equipment for us to take it over. for us to take it over, which would not be economically feasible from that standpoint.
Thank you. Anything else? I think we're good. Thank you so much. Mr. Gerber, Ms. Lee, anything else?
I believe that we have presented all the departments. So unless there's any outstanding questions for any of the department heads, we don't have any more information to offer at this time.
I just want to thank everyone for coming in. And I think it was a very good educational process. And I'm so sorry that we had, you had two council people holding you hostage you know, towards the end of the day. But it really was worth our time to be here. And I really want to thank you all for that, delving into this huge amount of money that the city spends. I, I think we have heard where it's going and the budget looks very good. So, thank you.
Thank you for letting us present to you today.
And thank you from me as well. There were some comments even internally from staff during the break that this... There was some hesitation about doing this. This has certainly been an opportunity for the public as well as council members that wanted to, for more transparency and for those commonly asked questions that council members get to be answered, to help be sort of at the back, if you will, of you all and the staff as, as we go forward. So, thanks again.
With that, we're adjourned.